Vice President Gohez.
Here.
President Andrews.
Here.
All rise for the flags, Luke?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the New Milford Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Borough Hall and the New Milford Public Library. Notices have been sent to the record and to some borough news. The board announces that under its longstanding policy, it will not discuss in public any comments made by members of the public concerning individual staff members. At this time, please advise that, please be advised that all cell phones and electronic devices are to be turned off. Meetings of the board are open to the public and all members of the community should feel free to participate. Before coming to the board, the chain of command should be followed. There are two portions of the meeting reserved for comments from the public. The first, at the beginning of the meeting, for agenda items only, and the second, at the end of the meeting, for other public items. Issues raised by the public may or may not be responded to by board, but all comments will be considered. The board requests that all members of the public be mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Due to confidentiality and legal rights afforded by the state of New Jersey, members of the public are asked not to speak negatively or in a derogatory manner about any employee of the board or any student. I make a motion to open to the public for items on the agenda. Can I go second? Seconded by Nicole Dunn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing that there is no one from the public, I make a motion to close to the public.
Motion seconded.
Seconded by Paige Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Our Superintendent of Schools report, Mrs. Danielle Stanley.
Good evening, everybody. What a crowd. So I'd like to share a few things with you this evening. So some of the mandated reports I need to share are the HIV report for August of 2022, and there were no reported cases of harassment, intimidation, or bullying in the month of August. As far as the suspension report goes, there were no recorded suspensions for the month of August. August is a beautiful month. School safety data system, which is the SSDS, which includes both incidents, trainings, and programming from January 1st through June, must be reported in public. So this is like a summary report of the incidents that I report to you monthly, but they must be reported out twice annually with a happy or sorry. So for the high school, we had a total of nine incidents of, of nine incidents, which includes any violence, vandalism, substance, weapons, or HIV confirmed. Not that we met all of those categories, but that's what's covered in the category. We had nine incidents, and monthly I report to you exactly what the infraction was. If it was drugs or alcohol, I report that to you. So nine incidents. Six of them were incidents that led to removal from school, and removal from school could mean removal to home for suspension or even in-school suspension. Four of them were HIV. And then we must tell you how many trainings we have, and there were seventeen different HIV trainings. At Berkeley Street School, one incident, two incidents of removal, no formal HIVs, and twenty-eight different trainings. And we say that because sometimes, especially at the elementary school or at the high school, you may do things in smaller groups. So it may say seventeen trainings or twenty-eight trainings. You must say, well, what do you do all day long? Well, you may train, you know, classes in smaller groups and do each twice or three times. At Gibbs, one incident, two removals, and there were thirty-five trainings. David Owens, thirteen incidents, five removals, ten HIVs, seventeen trainings. And so that's our summary for the year. Okay, and the other thing I need to report to you are the presentation of the CUSAC results. So the district has, according to the state of New Jersey, we were notified by the Executive Director of Field Support Services, who works directly with the commissioner, that we have been identified via our CUSAC review as a highly performing, high-performing district. This is not easy to do. It took the better part of the year to document everything that we must produce to know. Instruction and program, fiscal management, governance, which includes the work of the board, operations, and personal requirements. So it's not easy to do. I'm very grateful to the team who put together all of the detailed information and spent days upon days with the CUSAC evaluators, both online and in person, to demonstrate our high effective status. So I'd like to thank them all for that. And I'm happy that we do not have to revisit that review, that we go back onto the regular cycle, and it will not be reviewed again for another three years. Plenty of districts who for one or two domains need to be revisited again and/or repeatedly. We have, are very fortunate that we are not in that case because we have everybody doing what they're supposed to be doing. Okay. My upcoming, I'm gonna save my full report for tomorrow about other happy things, but my upcoming copy with the superintendent will be Tuesday, September 27th at 7:00 PM. I will send out a blast to parents with a link so that they can, so that they won't forget. A little reminder. So the topic for that meeting will be just introductions to new people in the district, talking about finding our Y from Simon Sinek, which is something we're working on as an administrative group as well, review of the district goals. And then I will share with the parents my plan for the remainder of the copies with the superintendent. So each copy will have a different topic. I may bring in guests from the district to speak about different topics so that we have a little bit more focus. Now that we've done the get-to-know-you year, which is what we did last year, I'd like to share some, you know, great goings-on and highlight some people who are doing wonderful things in the district through that. And then there will always be time for Q and A for parents. Okay, so I received notification today that our district's application for participation in the Limited Certificate of Eligibility and limited cert, it's the Limited Certificate of Eligibility and Limited Certificate of Eligibility with Advanced Standing Pilot has been approved. So I'd like to tell you a little bit more about this. You may have heard or seen on the news that New Jersey is doing what it can to help people who have qualifications secure teaching certifications. So they have offered this pilot. So if teachers, let's say, if an applicant is maybe supposed to have five criteria that they meet to get a teaching certificate, and they miss one of the five, for example, they would be eligible potentially after review for a limited certificate of eligibility. And then, as a participating district, the onus is on us to provide them the kind of support necessary to help them to be successful so that through a mentoring program that we already have in place, which is the same mentoring program we have for the other teachers, but just a little bit more intensive supervision, that we could help qualified people get teaching certifications. And this is a response to, obviously, the teacher shortage, especially in some, you know, specialized areas that really are a challenge. Trying to find a teacher who has an EdTech certification or a business certification or even a world language certification can really be a challenge a physics person. But if you have a physicist who has an academic history, you know, can pass the test, who really knows physics, who has a great way with kids, but who hasn't, for example, done their student teaching, it's almost like an alternate, alternate route, right? So we apply for the pilot so that allows us to hire teachers who fall into this category, and then it's our responsibility to mentor them. So our application for this has been approved, and I got notification of that today. And I hope that that helps us to fill some challenging spots that, you know, sometimes you meet a person who really is a high-quality individual that you think would make a great teacher, but they don't have that New Jersey certification, and you just can't hire them, right? So this is hopefully a pass to them. And the rest I'll save for tonight. Thank you very much.
Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction report, Lauren O'Donnell.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. So I just wanted to start by saying it's so nice to be back, and the classrooms are buzzing, and the buildings look great, and the kids are happy, and it's kind of like we never left. So it's really nice to be back into the full swing of things. I do have a few important updates to share with you. First, I wanted to draw your attention to the regular agenda for tomorrow evening, the A 22-23-17. It is the New Milford Public Schools Virtual or Remote Instruction Plan. So back in April of 2020, Governor Murphy signed A 3904 into law, which provides for the continuity of instruction in the event of a public health-related district closure by permitting school districts to utilize virtual or remote instruction to satisfy the 180-day requirement. So in order to ensure that we are providing for the continuity of instruction, districts must annually submit its proposed program for virtual or remote instruction to the New Jersey Department of Education. The plan for, we are seeking approval of the plan for the 22-23 school year, which will be submitted for approval, and it was developed in accordance with the guidance from the New Jersey Department of Education. The plan itself includes important information pertaining to connectivity, technology, programming, measuring student growth and learning, supporting diverse learners, including special education population and English language learners, attendance, how we take attendance in the virtual or remote setting, school schedules, meal services, and other important information such as like night care and facilities that would pertain to our response in the event of a health-related district closure. Yesterday, we blasted out a letter. It was the 2022-23 parental notification of standardized assessment. This has gone out every year. It serves to notify parents or guardians of any statewide student assessments or commercially-developed standardized assessments that will be administered over the course of this school year. The chart included in that mailing includes the name of the assessment, the subject area of the assessment, the grade levels covered by the assessment, the dates that the assessment is scheduled to be administered, the time allotted for students to take and complete the assessment, any accommodations or accessibility features available to students, links for additional, you've received it digitally, so you can visit those type of links, but links to access resources specific for parents, guardians, and students such as sample questions and answers, and reading the results of these assessments. And also, new this year is a little, the last column identifying whether the assessment is required by the federal government, state government, or local school district. I can tell you all but two of them are required both federally and state, and the locally required, well, the locally required assessments are benchmarks in Web and Linkit, which I spoke about extensively in the past. On Monday, September 19th, which was yesterday, the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment Individual Score Reports, so the MJSLA ISRs, were mailed home. So you should be receiving them shortly. The mailing included one report for each content area in which students were tested. Just as a reminder, students in grades three through nine were tested in ELA and Math. Students in grades five, eight, and 11 were tested in Science. The reports included in the ISR reports illustrate how students performed on each of the tests, and there's also charts and graphics that show how students performed in relation to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards and how your students' performance compares to other students in their school, within the district, and then across the state. Also in that mailing, you'll see there's mention of the parent portal. The online parent portal provides parents and guardians with access to these individual score reports. It also includes the student scale score and a video score report, which communicates information from the ISR through like video animations and voiceover. And it also is available in five different languages, English, Spanish, Chinese, Portuguese, and Arabic. The parent portal is also useful for helping you track your student scores from year to year, beginning with the Spring 2019 assessment results. And again, in that email, you can, there's a link to the portal, and there's also directions for creating an account so that you can log in and access it. At our next work session on October 18th, we will be reporting the Spring 22 statewide assessment results. That will include MJSLA, ELA, Math, Science, Access for Ls, which is our assessment for English language learners, and our DLM, our Dynamic Learning Mounds results. The Start Strong assessment, just a reminder here, will be administered in person beginning on Monday, October 3rd. The New Jersey Department of Ed extended the testing window from September 30th to October 21st to provide districts with more flexibility in scheduling that testing. September is National Suicide Prevention Month. To help raise awareness about mental health supports and resources available to New Jersey youth in crisis, the New Jersey Department of Children and Families Office of Communications and Public Affairs has produced a new Youth Suicide Prevention Public Service Announcement, or PSA, reminding youths to look out for each other and connect around mental health and lobbying, and know where to turn when peer supports aren't enough. The Youth Suicide PSA also promotes the recently established Three-Digit National Suicide and Crisis Lifeline 988, which can connect callers to New Jersey-based services, including the DCF Children's System of Care or Perform Care, the State Behavioral Health System for children and youth, and as well as 911 for emergency situations. Also, you will see this on the agenda now, but I believe it is being added and will appear for tomorrow. Underboard Action, we're seeking approval of revisions to the Safe Return Plan, and that will be linked in there for you. But there's just some additional guidance pertaining to the return of students who have tested positive for COVID, and the day that they're able to return, and then the return of students who do not have symptoms. I have to actually pull it up to give that.
I remember it.
Do you want me to read it?
So it's for a student who has tested positive. And I say "student" because the guidance is different for teachers, and I'll explain to you why. So if a student tests positive for COVID, either the first day of their symptoms or the first day of the positive test, whichever's first, is day zero. They must quarantine for 10 days and may return to school on day 11. During that time, they can, they will receive virtual instruction, which may be synchronous or asynchronous, depending upon the course and the grade, et cetera. For students who, after day five, whose symptoms have subsided, or maybe they were never really symptomatic in the first, please. After day five, they may test with a PCR, and if their symptoms have subsided and they have a negative test between day six and 10, they can return to school. They cannot return to school if they are still COVID-positive or still symptomatic with a mask, even though that's what the New Jersey Health Guidelines say. The reason why we cannot accommodate that is because we cannot accommodate students for snack and lunch unless they take their masks off. And you cannot have a COVID-positive child in the building without their masks on because the guidance says with a well-fitted mask on at all times, we cannot make that happen here. For a teacher, they could return because a teacher could potentially have their lunch outside the building, alone in their room, in their car, for example. And with a student, I cannot ensure that that mask stays on all the time. So although in maybe other places, that is what is happening, we can't ensure that here. So a negative test and a resolution of symptoms will allow them to come back.
So the, what Danielle just spoke about will appear highlighted.
And the other piece that is not changing since the summer is that we will not be doing contact tracing. It's not required for us to do contact tracing anymore, regardless of immunization status. So all that will happen is that every Friday, our nurses will update the COVID-positive cases by building on our website. At the end of that Friday. Thanks, Lauren.
And that concludes my report for this morning.
Thank you.
This is administrative report.
Dr. Stephanie Pachar. Good evening, everyone. So I have to apologize. I requested that my copy be one-sided because I make notes on it. And I think when that happened, you were missing a page. So you're all probably looking for board action. So thanks, Dan, for making this. I have to take responsibility for that because my copy had everything, so I didn't think that yours did not. So I apologize. With that being said, briefly, there have been some challenges with transportation, both in district and the non-public routes. My staff is working on resolving that, making changes and adjustments. We're down a few drivers in district, and we're looking at some of the issues that have arisen on some of the non-public routes and making those changes as well. The vestibule project is almost complete. We're still missing some furniture that we're waiting on. We passed all inspections. We're waiting for the final CO and to fully move into that space, which will hopefully be this week, early next week. Just at that time of the year with the free and reduced lunch applications and the importance of submitting those by October 15th, you can submit them all year, especially this year with the Chromebook fees that would be reduced or waived if you qualify for free and reduced lunch. So please submit those applications as soon as possible. And then lastly, just a reminder to the board that the New Jersey Annual School Boards Convention is October 24th through the 26th. Colleen has already reserved rooms for those people who have responded that they will be attending, and anyone else who has not or would still like to attend, please just reach out, and she will set that up. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. So, maybe we have questions about being able to do them now, or?
You can ask.
I don't know if you were gonna do anything else.
No, I was gonna move on to items for the agenda items for discussion. Do you have a question for one of the reports?
Yeah, sure.
So Danielle, you mentioned the Limited Certificate of Eligibility, the pilot, and it's not alternate route, right? Like, because there's alternate route.
It's like, it's more like traditional route. Because they are, they may be missing one piece.
Okay. So they're a little closer than, say, a business person coming in.
Correct.
So, and then when we do that, I'm just stating this as the board. So when we do that and there is someone that's going to come in, have you thought about how that would be presented to us and how we would know how that is going? Kind of like a pending certification kind of thing? Like how we would be notified, okay, now we're good, this one will be certified, kind of thing? So we know.
Well, when, so let me ask you this. When I hire somebody who has a CE or a CEAS, I do not designate that currently
Right.
in the agenda, right? Because essentially, New Jersey considers them the same eligible for hire, but then what they have to go through, be it sign up for two courses, it's like a thousand-dollar mentor versus a $500 mentor, none of that ever appears on the agenda.
Well, we do approve mentors.
You approve mentors, but you don't, you don't necessarily, like when we approve a teacher. So the mentors comes after.
Yeah.
They're hired before you approve mentors.
Right.
So I would hire somebody with, in the opinion of the professionals who recommended this person to me, and in my opinion, based on what I'm reading, that they would be a good fit for this role. I don't currently designate them CE or CEAS to the public
Right.
or to you. So if we were going to do that for this, I think you would want to do it for everyone.
I thi, I think mostly because of the situation that we've had recently with the, right? So I'd rather know ahead of time.
But this person would have the cert, or they would be on the agenda. They would have it, they'll have a cert. They'll have a state cert. It'll just say "limited."
Okay, so they're, they're not gonna get hired and, what I'm trying to figure out is because I don't know how it works, so I haven't read up on it.
So sometimes I will put.
They're not getting hired, and then the limited is, the certification is happening after they're here.
No, I will know that when I'm hiring them.
Okay.
So there is somebody that I believe.
And I don't have anyone to help you.
And I, sometimes I will put pending. I'll give you an example. I have somebody, let's say, somebody from the state of New York.
Right.
Right? And they're, they're a state-certified teacher in New York. They've been there 10 years. Now they're coming here. New Jersey's evaluating their transcripts. I know they're gonna get it, but I will put pending certification from the state of New Jersey. And they will not walk in the building to assume that role without that certification. Period. Like Terry and I are lunatics of that.
Yeah.
If they come in for a period of time, let's say a few days before they start to transition, or maybe we'll hire them as a sub, but not in that role.
Okay.
Okay? So if they're supposed to be fourth-grade math, and I'm waiting for something, and they have, I don't know, PE cert, and I don't have math, if they sub in the district as a sub, they could sub absolutely anywhere except that fourth-grade math class, I will not put them in there. So it's something that I have to, and the administrators have to, very carefully supervise, which I do.
Well, and I'm talking, in this case, they have to be put in that position in order to get the mentor and receive the.
Correct, but they can't be registered in the mentoring program without the cert.
Okay. So they come, they would come hiring, they would be hired with this limited eligibility certification.
Yep, but if they don't have that cert that says "limited,"
Okay.
that they are not going in that room, not for a day.
That, it, that clarified it for me because now I understand. It's not, it's not the certification they're getting when they're here. It's the certification they get, they say, here, I have this certification, and then you have to take extra steps to make sure.
Right, right, correct. So, and they're closer, like a limited CEAS is closer than an alternate route.
Right.
Yeah, arguably.
And I know alternate route is different because they have to do something different.
Totally different, yeah.
And then the other question I had, and it was just on something that was said from Lauren, but really it's, or on the BA. You said something about the, that plan, that return.
Return?
The return to school or the remote?
The re, the return to school, not the remote, because that's linked here.
The return to school with the updates to the, you know, testing and quarantine. It's not actually on the BA list right now?
It will be tomorrow.
It will be tomorrow. Okay, that's all I wanted to figure out of, because I was already off, so I made sure I wasn't. That was it. Those were my two questions.
I'm sorry. I can't believe, the only gla- because I came here in my sunglasses, which are also readers. And then I walked in and I was like, I can't walk around with sunglasses. I look silly. That happens to me.
Do we have any liaison or board committee reports? I know that there were reports handed out tonight as well as posted to the guide, so.
You can go first. Okay, so I only printed mine out because I typed mine up today and didn't get it in. It's hard for you to see in there before, but if you are online, like John and Joe are and Cheryl is, Stephanie added it to the regular meeting folder, so you can zoom in there. Sorry, the font is small. So we did the ad hoc bylaw committee. That ad hoc was created, um, after our retreat. And it was in response to, uh, board, board members asking about our policy or bylaw around onboarding, training new board members. So, and it, it kind of goes along that, but then the whole thing was really, let's look at all of our bylaws and make sure we're updated. So the two things that we discussed were a review of what we currently have and then that board retreat item. Uh, we reviewed the bylaws from three other districts and did individual readings of the current bylaws prior to the meeting. So we came into the meeting to have these discussions. None of these, excuse my typo, districts had a more comprehensive list of bylaws. Um, I printed out one of them, you know, Ridgewood here, and I also, um, printed out the document that's attached if you want to see it, if you don't have it right now. But, um, we also decided that we were gonna set up some business rules because as we reviewed, there, there's a lot of bylaws there. And so, um, the determination was we would use the Strauss ESME language, um, as the guide, right? So unless there was a reason to add anything addition, additional specific to New Milford or a reason that it related to New Milford, we were going with the language that was in Strauss ESME, even to the point where we're in one. The language was, we had it as number two and they had it as number three, so we flipped it. So we wanted to make it so that everything is, is equal. So that was the first thing. Then the second thing was, and also I put extra language in here, but basically there were bylaws that don't pertain to us because we are not an approved private school for students with disabilities. So that wouldn't be a bylaw that we could have. We're not a charter school. Um, in one instance, it was discussing, um, when it talked about the board representative, the student board representative, it said grades seven, I think it was seven, seven to 12, and we don't do that because our high school goes nine to 12. So it's things like that that we might have to update, but other than that, we, we use that as a guideline. Um, we also determined that the adoption date should be no older than two years. And if, for this review, we said 2021. So anything older than January of 2021, we automatically know we're going to review and put it up for re-adoption, even if it didn't change, even if the language doesn't change. Um, so that, but when we're done, everything will be in 2023, nothing will be older than two years. And then the plan is that every year, we look for anything that might be older than that two-year pro- time and do that review and make sure that it's up to date. So our bylaws are always, you know, within reason updated. Or if an, or if some update comes from Strauss ESME, we do that too. So if it was updated prior to the most recent Strauss ESME update, we're gonna review it. So if it's, Strauss ESME said, you know, September of 2020 and we had, you know, August of 2017, we're gonna review it, make sure the updates are made, present it for re-adoption. If the update was made at the same time, we were gonna look at it, make sure nothing needed to be changed. If it was older than 2021, we would put up for re-adoption. If not, we'll leave it as is. And then finally, if it was, um, updated and it doesn't, it didn't require it because it was in 2021 or older, we'll just make sure. And if not, we'll just leave it as is. Some examples of that, although we will still do the review, would be, um, the, uh, remote meetings because that was brought on. It was a brand new one, so we're not gonna re-adopt that, but we'll look at it. So we worked through the list. I did provide it in the minutes. So when you do have a chance to get in there, you'll see there's a link in there to the minutes. And in the, in that link, you'll see it's a list of all the bylaws and then our notes to the right on the column there to be able to tell you what we were gonna update or what we thought needed to be updated. Um, and we got through about half of them, um, went extra on our meeting time. And so we scheduled another meeting for October 4th where we're gonna finish the list. At that point, we'll collect it up and then, um, we made edits to the current bylaws. So all of the documentation will be updated and then will be presented to the board to be re-adopted for any of those. For the items regarding the training, um, we did discuss that. And our recommendation is that we will look to the bylaw, make sure that it's updated to reflect all of the topics. By the way, the bylaws do cover training for new, uh, board members. So, but, and we didn't want to get too specific in the how in the bylaw. Um, it was recommended from, um, the superintendent. When we do policies, we do policy regulation, like policy, and then how do we, you know, implement it. So what we are going to say is that the bylaws will be updated, which I think they'll be okay, but that we need an action plan. So this committee could still work through that, but it would be a separate item. So once we finish with all the bylaws by the next meeting, then we'll make sure that we work with the president to establish what the needs are in that training package. So for instance, one of our bylaws talks about the training that you have to do through New Jersey School Boards. That's very straightforward. But then what do we do within district? So we listed out some, uh, draft items right now. When it comes time to present it, we'll present it to the rest of the board. So it's a lot of work, similar to any other policy or any other type of work. Uh, but, uh, everyone was definitely very engaged and committed, and so that's our plan. That's it. I don't know if anyone else has anything to add.
Thank you. That was very informative.
Nothing?
No, you did great.
What's the purpose of the, um, the training committee that was created, the ad hoc?
So is there a training committee? So then we'll just hand it off?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just asking that to what extent are they all together? Is there a purpose to that from that committee being?
So we were going to, we wanted to make sure we updated the bylaw first. That was the last one that we reviewed. And then we can turn that over to the people who were on the training committee and they can start working on that.
So I said, we can, we can work with it, but that, the recommendation is to hand that over, to work with the.
Are there any other committees?
Yes. Okay, but, um, we had an athletic committee meeting just to go over some, um, important updates regarding athletics. Um, I wanna thank Mr. Rigadelli for giving us, uh, giving us some time to be able to ask questions and give us exciting events that are going on, um, in our athletic program. So the first thing, um, just a quick update about the full season. As of yesterday, the boys soccer team and the volleyball team are currently in first place. Um, the girls soccer is two and two, football is one and two, but, and the cross country is doing really well. We just want, we had a couple, uh, important things this weekend is athletics, uh, the first annual athletics day. So from like nine AM in the morning to after three o'clock, there are all home events. So at nine AM is sock, girls soccer, 11 is girls tennis, 11, uh, would be boys soccer, and 3:00 PM is the varsity football game. Uh, Mr. Rigadelli was able to. From ShopRite, I'm sorry. Um, there'll be food trucks, DJ, the PTO will have food, Conrad's ice cream trucks. So it'll be a nice event for the town to have, like, people come and watch the sporting programs. Um, also, in the month of October, they will be, um, some of the athletes will be wearing pink to, for, pink days in October for recognition for breast cancer awareness. We also talked about the athletic, um, council that was created. So it's a couple, five parents that assist Mr. Rigadelli. Talk about like the sporting programs, the events are going on. They, um, have one of the parents who's in charge of the Instagram page. So I will share this doc with everybody. I apologize. I finished it late last night and didn't get a chance to share it out. So that has all the pertinent information about calendar dates. Um, I know there was some questions regarding the marching band and the podium. We asked questions regarding that. The original podium was ruined in the storm last year. In May, the band director was cleaning up, organizing her storage unit, realized that the second podium was a little, you know, needed to, best way to say, needed to be replaced. So she reached out to Mr. Rigadelli. It was ordered. So with everything nowadays, everything is backlogged. It's a custom-made item and a specialty order. So the expectations will be here sooner than later. What else? The other thing was about, some people had questions about the track program. This sofa track, we have a middle school program and a high school program. There are starting blocks available, brand new ones. Um, the middle school has access to them whenever they need them. Athletes can, you know, can bring them themselves, but no one's ever asked to do that. Uh, we also discussed uniforms. Um, we talked about pertinent things that the athletic department, like budgeted items for 23, 24. Um, just so the boards are aware, uniforms are purchased every three years for the sporting programs with the exception of, um, football, which is every four years. So for example, football is getting, they had just received black uniforms. They're waiting on white ones because if anybody's in sports knows that everything was backordered, especially uniforms. The cheer, the cheerleaders are also getting new ones. So then like moving forward, um, next year would be soccer. So every, there's a rotation to, um, ensure that everybody's getting what they need. Um, we talked about the gym floors at Berkeley and Gibbs being, uh, resurf- resurfaced over the summer. That that's a need to be done. Um, we talked about possibly looking into speakers for outside at the football stadium because if anybody's been to any games, you hear the speaker blasting right in one spot. And we'd like to have speakers so that everybody has the same experience. Um, the lighting outside also needs to be updated. Right now, we currently have, like, Mr. Rigadelli, the lights have to come on. They have to use a key to open up the boxes to get them up and running. So we would, they, ideally, we would like to have that program where it's simply just clicking an app on someone's phone to turn the lights on. And the other pertinent thing that the athletic program really needs is the ice maker, and that's important for our program. The other thing that he mentioned was that senior days and senior, the senior days and nights, um, the varsity football, boys soccer and tennis were all confirmed. We, there is an interest meeting next week for middle school baseball and softball. That's not a budgeted item, so we're just looking, it's something that's just being looked into. And our next meeting is in November. So it was nice to get an opportunity to have that time with Mr. Rigadelli and just hear the wonderful things that our athletes have been doing at all different levels. We plan on doing this a couple of times, like at least through every season, just to give the board some updates on what's.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I did, just, you mentioned the ice maker.
Oh, the other thing to, um, I'm sorry, page.
No.
There was something I did forget. I missed a page. I also just want to share. These were pictures that, um, Mr. Kelly, or Mr. Kelly had shared with me and, um, at the meeting. These are the starting blocks that are in the. Storage unit. I'll pass it around. I will share this, the doc, so everybody can see it.
Oh, okay.
But if you want to take a look at it now, that the starting blocks are in good condition. There's brand new ones that have never even been opened and are available.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I didn't realize we weren't finished.
So question, you mentioned the ice maker, right? You said that's a need. So is that a need that's been, so somewhere or what is that?
Well, it broke this year.
Yeah.
So right now, they're using the new ice maker from the cafeteria. That's where they're getting their ice. But they don't have their own ice maker and they really do need one over here by the gym.
No, I understand that. I'm saying it's a need. We have a lot of needs. So is it on the list as a need?
Actually, of all the things that he discussed, he said that's his top priority for next year, for next year. So we're gonna share now and it'll be.
Okay. That was it?
Sure. There used to be a snack, like snack stand.
That's not ours.
It was, right?
It was now ours. It was PTO's.
Oh, so it was a PTO snack stand. So it wasn't, there was never like a snack stand at the games?
Well, there was, but it didn't belong to the district.
Okay.
Stephanie, did you wanna say out to that at all?
I could, uh.
It's not really a done deal.
Yeah, so, um, that snack stand had been flooded numerous times. And it was, when we went in it, uh, shortly after Aida last year, it was, the smell, I, I can't even describe it. It was so awful. And so we have this great idea of finding a mobile trailer. So it would have, um, it would be equipped with all of the, ideally, all of the wants. So I had sent out an email to the president of all the PTOs because historically, it was, it was stationary at the high school. So it was only accessible to the high school PTO. So the idea would be that it would be accessible to all. Unfortunately, well, fortunately, we found one. Um, it was, uh, being sold by a company out of Arizona. And we went and we looked at it. It was stored in Bergen Field, but the company did not have a VRC. So we couldn't actually purchase it. And it was like twenty thousand dollars less than if we put it out to bid. So we could put it out to bid. So we're sort of in this like situation of seeing if that company is gonna get the VRC for New Jersey to be able to conduct business here, um, with the public district, or do we have to put it out to bid? So that's something that's a work in progress, but really looking to be able to utilize it at like a field day at one of the elementary schools or, uh, baseball or softball at the middle school or any of the middle school events so that students across the board can use it, not just football or whatever was historically the PTO had used it for, the high school.
And also move it so it doesn't flood again.
And move it. And so that way you can move it out of a flood zone or move it with a trailer, you know? So that's kind of where we are at.
And I believe there was a lot, the PTO had stored stuff in it.
Yes, they did.
So it was all lost.
Thank you for that update.
Thank you for that question.
Do we have any other committee or liaison reports? I see Councilwoman Sular.
Sure. It's great to see everybody again. We do have a few events coming up, as everyone is aware. On October 16th, will be Music Fest at Knights Fields. Uh, it will be in the afternoon with the exact time to be ironed out in the coming days. October 20th, the Municipal Alliance and Stigma Free Committee are presenting a health awareness symposium at the high school. And we'll be addressing issues of addiction and recovery and, and of course, mental health. October 25th is, as everyone is aware, this year's Domestic Violence Awareness Symposium. For point of clarification, the event is both live with in-person attendance and also simultaneously livestreamed. We welcome and encourage as many people who would like to, to attend in person, as we feel that's the best opportunity for people to ask questions directly of the participating guest speakers and panelists. Insofar as this year's topic, the prosecutor's office has confirmed that they will be providing a featured survivor who will speak and share her story of surviving. The group will then discuss the issues which arose during that survivor's story and will also be discussing the impact of domestic violence on children and families. And even more specifically discussing cyber harassment, cyber stalking and forms of, and forms of threats and issues that affect younger victims as well. So we look forward to seeing as many of you as possible at all of these upcoming events. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And I would like to, um, let the board know that, who designed those beautiful flyers?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Who designed those beautiful flyers?
Jessica Conforti in the New Milford Police Department.
So, um, she designed some beautiful informative flyers, which Danielle has informed me she's going to share with the board as well as send out to the New Milford families through the backpack.
Backpack, those from the website.
And it's on their website.
Social media.
So that's coming soon.
Thank you. And I would also, uh, just give thanks to Scott Graphics, who graciously offered to print the flyers professionally uh, for free for us for the first time.
That's excellent.
Tremendous.
So we'll get the word out. And those, those flyers are coming.
Thank you. And, and as we say every year, thank you for your true partnership in all of our programs. It's incredible to have such a joint community in presenting all of these symposiums and opportunities for people who need help to get the help of it. So thank you.
Agreed. And thank you.
Yes, thank you, Matt. I just also wanted to say that, uh, my apologies in advance that I cannot be there and some of the board members cannot be there. Just so that the public knows, obviously, uh, we would wholeheartedly support and be present for such an event as we've been in the past, but it happens to conflict with our New Jersey School Boards Conference. And difficult decisions need to be made, and we had already committed to that. So, um, we're still hosting and we will still definitely have people here representing us. But I apologize that I cannot personally be there and on Tanya's behalf and some. But I apologize that I cannot personally be there and on Tanya's behalf and some of us who can't be there, that's why.
And in the future, we'll make sure.
We'll make sure that we get it right.
That there's no conflict much earlier in the year.
Thank you.
So I apologize as well that it presents a conflict.
You know what, things happen. Look at all the great dates and all the things that are going on in town. There are bound to be conflicts. We do the best we can. You know, we're, we're human and imperfect.
I think the most important thing is that it's happening. Because this is important for many people.
Right.
And for those, for those on the board who are not aware, a tremendous amount of credit has to be given to the past several years to Mr. Dan Creed. The tremendous work that you've done livestreaming it. To be completely candid. To be completely candid, he saved the symposium during the pandemic. We would have needed to cancel the program if it weren't for you, Dan. Dan, thank you so much. But I just wanted to leave you with, last year's program, I believe, and of course, I'll refer to Mr. Creed, ended up with a following of over three thousand five hundred views. Joint between the Facebook livestream and also the YouTube livestream. So the work that the community is doing is making a difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Seymour, question, sure?
All right, no, I'm sorry. No, I'm not running this meeting. I'm sorry.
Yeah, the chair recognizes.
I just, you mentioned the music, what is that?
Oh, Music Fest.
October sixteenth.
Can you tell us about it?
Yes. It's an opportunity for the town, the community to go to Knights Field, enjoy a day out with music and basically, essentially celebrate another great sports facility for our town and our kids.
So is there, like, there's going to be Music Fest, there's going to be bands playing? Like, what is the Music Fest?
I don't know the exact details yet. I know that our mayor's been ironing out.
Okay.
Who's going to be.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Not at all, no, I'm just being honest. I know the mayor's working on exactly who's going to be performing in what capacity. It's going to be at the pavilion, which my understanding is the concrete was actually poured down today. So it looks like we're finally done with Knights Field. Being ready, maybe good for the town use. And it's also a great opportunity for people in the community who may not have children in the sports program and therefore may not have the opportunity to know what the field's being used for, to come out and enjoy the facilities.
Thank you.
Bringing a guitar, right?
Uh, no.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour.
Thank you.
Are there any other board liaison, board committee liaison reports? That leads us to agenda items for discussion. Review of tentative agenda for the regular meeting to be held on September twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Review of board action. Oh, there's no board action. I got it. Yeah, but I.
It's on the second.
Yeah, got it, yes. Which we all should have read online anyway prior to coming to this meeting, so it's okay. If we have questions, we should have written them down. Review of educational programs and curriculum. Review of personal recommendations. Review of finance. Review of facilities. Review of policy. Additional board items? Old business? Ms. Luna?
I'm assuming that if there was, we probably would have known. But is there any update on the historic cemetery? Did we get any determination on any of that or?
No, not yet. Teddy Grant's still working on her part of it. And I have, I have, I have it now, but then there were things that were added, yes, so.
New business? Ms. Luna?
Stop me if I'm not okay here. I think I am, but stop me. I got an email, as we all did, from school boards, talking about increased costs with healthcare. Is that something I could talk about?
Yeah.
So. Is that something we just essentially deal with in January? Is that something that we attempt to plan for somehow now? That's really my question. You know, it was, it was obviously concerning. I remember getting emails over the summer in which, you know, they were asking about resolutions and such. I'm trying to put it on the show, so. But I just, it's concerning, so I thought I'd ask if I was about.
No, that's a question you can ask.
It's a good question. So, and it's a challenge that all school boards face every year. So when you are part of things like the state health benefits plan and/or the New Jersey teacher plan, you could in a given year be looking at, and remember something too, that the health plan works on a different calendar year than the school plan, right? So health insurance costs make up in January. In the middle of this budget, we may have budgeted for, let's say, ten or twelve percent increase. I don't know off the top of my head what these budgets, Stephanie can answer. But you may be looking at an eighty percent increase in cost beginning January first. And those are some of the challenges that districts face because we're not running on the same budget, the same year. And you really have no control over what happens. So very often, what New Jersey school boards will do, as will the New Jersey Superintendent's Association and things like that, will write letters on behalf of boards, will ask boards to support resolutions that then go to the state and, you know, to try to appeal to reason. They have increasing costs and sometimes we can't absorb the increase in costs. I remember when I was here, I don't know, maybe it was two thousand eleven or twelve, and healthcare costs for January went up like eighteen and a half percent and we had budgeted like ten. And that could really pose a problem for a district. You could be forced in, let's say that all goes well, we're talking about this last night. Let's say all goes well and you have a really mild winter. You may have a few hundred dollars, hundred thousand dollars that you haven't spent in your really mild winter and you may be able to shift it over. Sometimes you get gratis from the state as far as increase for like the following year. Where they may say to you, well, normally you go about at two percent, but because of the healthcare increase and we know what you're dealing with, maybe for your next budget, we'll let you go out at something else. But these are all different possibilities. That's the way. I understand it. And what we then do is say, it's going to cost us this much money in healthcare. Let's say another half a million dollars that we hadn't planned on. So now when we're budgeting for next year, where's that half a million dollars coming from? We're either cutting programs, cutting teachers, or. Cutting programs, cutting teachers. I mean, it's basically what, what you wind up doing. So I'm going to let Stephanie add to that because this is really her area of specialty and she can speak to specifics.
That was actually my report for tomorrow, so.
Oh.
Because it's a fifteen point one percent increase and we had budgeted, I believe, eleven percent.
We, we hadn't even had this conversation. I mean, this just came up a week ago.
And so I have, so I was going to actually report on that tomorrow when I looked at the numbers because we will have to find places to fund it. Because you can't, once your budget is set in April, because it runs on an annual basis from January through December of the following year, you know what your fixed costs are going to be from July through December. And then January through June could be anything. And so typically, the broker will provide a historical chart of the trends. And so you can sort of see based on where you are in that trend, what you can anticipate. But this particular year was higher than what was anticipated. Which happens because it's, you have no idea where the state is going to land on this. So we definitely are going to have to find money somewhere else in budget.
So, so if I just can follow up to that. If fifteen percent is the, what is our, what is, what is our baseline cost right now? So what does fifteen percent represent? Is that a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, two million? Is there, is there a roughly?
It would be like five percent, the difference between what we budgeted and what it's actually going to be, four and a half or whatever, whatever that number is.
It's the.
You'll get the numbers from.
Right, and it's the premium we're talking about. We're not talking about the total cost because then the employee pays a share of that. So, and we administer four different plans within that state health benefits. So to even speak about.
Okay.
Numbers is.
Right. Because you have to look at the individuals and really look at our.
So that, that was, I'm sorry.
No, I don't, I don't, go ahead.
What, just my follow up to that. And I didn't know if I was treading the line that I'm not allowed to speak about, so.
No, this is public.
If we're talking about, you know, fifteen point one percent, is there a contribution within that fifteen point one percent? And does that, if, if, I'm making up a number. If the employee's contribution is whatever, is it really net to fourteen point one percent or thirteen point one or?
So when we're talking about the overall percentage of the increase, it's on the total, like the total bill. So we have two plans that contribute on a chapter seventy-eight, which is a percentage of the total premium. And then two plans that the employees contribute on a chapter forty-four basis, which is a percentage of salary that goes towards the bill. So when we process the payroll, we take those deductions and then we make a transfer and pay the healthcare. So the board is paying, so an employee with family coverage that's paying thirty-two percent would be on the higher side of a contribution. Whereas somebody who's paying eight percent of a premium, it's single, they're, the board is picking up a lot more of their, of their cost. So until you could, I have to look at how many people are family, how many are parent-child, how many are parents, husband-wife, and then how many are single coverage? And then what plan do they, what plan do they participate in? To figure out truly what the impact to the board is. So, so it's this, it's a long process. And so I was just going to give a highlight and an overview tomorrow and then get into the, the numbers as we get closer because things can change. We could have people go on maternity leave, we could have people leave and come in. There are so many different variables that go into it that it could change month by month very quickly.
Thank you.
But it's definitely like a, a high tension moment because you're looking at this going, okay, I need to come up with this by June. I mean, I need to come up with this within this school year's budget. Now, am I going to do that?
Well, that's, that's what I, that's what made no sense to me. Like, how do you?
I'm sorry, Chair recognizes Patreon.
I just, I just want to say that over the years, especially since this past year, since it changed, the chapter seventy-eight and the chapter forty-four and the different types of contributions. One of the things that we've noticed and we, we investigated leaving the state health plan a few years ago. Because the state benef, you know, state plan allows like a group rate, right? So you may benefit from that. But what also happens is sometimes those that are kind of high usage of benefits makes the premiums go up. So if you're a part of that group, now you're kind of getting dragged with them. So it's, it's a balancing act of whether you leave or you don't leave. But when they changed the, the plan, like we looked at it and it was better for us to stay at that time because then the benefits were, the premiums are actually going down, so it was better. So at this point now, when we look at it, two things that impacted is COVID. And a lot of people were using their benefits. And when you use your benefits, they make the premium go up. It's just, not just here, but all over the state. Two, and this is from our experience, is the state health benefits plan for chapter forty-four created these two new groups. And usually you get the introductory rate and they give them a, you know, a premium at this level, but always followed by an increase in the premium. And so that just seems like that's what's happened, is that this was this perfect storm. Now, we were told from the state that this is going to be great, it's going to solve all the districts, all millions and millions of dollars. It's going to solve the, save the employees, millions and millions of dollars.
District.
That actually didn't occur as we know from what we found out, that we actually spent a hundred and twenty thousand more? Hundred and twenty thousand more in benefits than they had, they, the state said we would. So right there was a kick. So this is an ongoing thing and New Jersey school boards, hopefully, we continue to use them to advocate for the whole state because this move was made with no benefit to school districts whatsoever. I do think that some employees had a benefit because they are now contributing based on their salary and not on their premium. But I think they have to attack the premiums because that's really where we're all getting killed. Because no matter what, the, the employees do contribute to their, a percentage to that. But in the end, the district is owning the rest. And we always own the bigger piece. So it's just, it's frustrating and actually, so twenty percent, so I'm glad it's fifteen. It's, it's closer to fifteen. And not, you know, and, and something's got to give because it went up and now it's going to go up again. And it's just, I know that was more of a statement, but I just wanted to say like for, for the stuff that you were asking about, I feel like that's where that's headed. And that if, if Stephanie can give us what the direction is and then as we get a little closer, which really isn't that far away, really. I mean, we're at the end of September at this point, right? So to give us the actual number based on our employees, that's going to be more realistic of what we think, I think. Because it is.
Thank you.
And I just, I'm frustrated, I'm so frustrated with this because it's something that we knew was going to happen. And it just, it's, it's awful. It's just awful to every district in this state, every school district.
Thank you. Before we move on, that was news business. Before we move on to open public, your question about school boards reminded me. Cheryl, you are, we should, I should have asked you during liaison, you're our delegate. Do you want to update the board on the email that came from them on the next meeting?
On which one?
The next county board meeting.
You know what, I haven't, I was going to report on it tomorrow or for today. But I did want to point out, I missed my opportunity. There is a session, I think, on September twenty-ninth that the school boards is inviting members to regarding budgeting in inflationary times. You know, obviously, we're talking about the increase in cost due to the, these premiums. But obviously, there's inflation, I mean, everybody's, everything costs more. So I'm, I'm interested in going, I'm going to go in person. So if you haven't received that email, I'm happy to report it to you. And then I can discuss the other emails tomorrow.
Thank you very much. That's really important. I plan to go in person as well, depending on my work and the same family schedule. Otherwise, I'll go virtual. They are still offering both. So I hope, depending on your schedules, everyone can attend either way. Because at the retreat, we discussed that was important to all of us.
Yeah.
You're very busy.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that out. All right, so now. Oh, somebody had a question?
I was just going to say, is it, are you going to read Sunday because I don't.
Obviously, New Jersey school boards do it, yeah.
Okay. I'm sure I have it.
No, I'm just.
Thank you. All right. Open to the public as outlined on New Moford Board of, I seek a motion to open to the public as outlined in New Moford Board of Education by law zero one six seven. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to two minutes. Can I get a motion? Motion by John Acosta, seconded by Nicole Dunn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And seeing as there are no comments from the public, I seek a motion to close to the public. Motion by Patreon, seconded by Heather Gomez, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Are there any board member requests for additional information?
That would request, probably what you were asking about. It's new business, but it's probably a request for information on the benefits.
That's true. And which Stephanie is going to report out to us tomorrow.
Yeah, John, totally. Totally good.
Yes, this is not really a request, just a comment. I've communicated with Terry a lot, the transportation coordinator, she's fantastic. I mean, just, I know that there's been, you know, the issues that have happened in September. But I, everybody that I've spoken to that has been involved in our situation has been truly happy with what she's done. So I know that it's, not that an easy start to tenure, but she's doing a great job. So your office is, you know, doing really well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And to the public, you know, we apologize for the craziness of September. Even if they're not our buses or our routes necessarily, they are our students and it's our community. And we do our best to partner with the people who, you know, the other districts or services who provide routes for us. And we do the same for them. September is notoriously disastrous in getting routes established and settled and working out the kinks and the times and it's notoriously disastrous. On top of that, it's important to know that our business office has literally been working in a closet because their offices are being renovated. So, you know, Stephanie is working on a folding table in someone else's office. and other people are working in, literally in closets with papers piled high to the ceiling. It's not an ideal situation. I'm not making excuses, but I, the most important thing is that we handle these situations with kindness and grace and sensitivity and patience because parents are anxious about their children getting there where they need to. And, um, we're doing the very, very best we can. And we do our suffering from a bus driver shortage, as is a large part of New Jersey. So we really, we're trying to cram more students onto single routes. That's another, you know, individual route. So that's another issue. But, um, I'm glad that you were treated with kindness and I, I understand that your situation has worked out.
And she, you know what? She, I mean, my situation's worked out and I know she's communicating with parents till like seven thirty in the morning. She's even on the back of the office. And I know that she's the middle man in a lot of these different things. So, um, everyone is, even if it's not resolved, they have sang her praises. So I just wanted to make sure.
We're working on it, we promise.
Yeah.
And that's half the battle, honestly. And so that's such great things to hear back that.
Yeah.
Even if it's not resolved, that at least she's meeting people with, um, so thank you very much for that.
We will share that.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Um, and that leads us to adjourn. I make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second? Seconded by Paige Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let me turn.